Good morning. The November 25th, 2020 meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden Liz Danielson presiding.
Good morning, everyone, on this snowy day. Mike, if you could take a roll call, please.
Councillor Moffat?
Present.
Warden Danielson?
Present.
Councillor Roberts?
Present.
Councillor Kennedy?
Present.
Councillor Burton?
Present.
Councillor Ryle?
Present.
Councillor De Volan?
Present.
And Councillor Shell?
Present.
Thank you. Could I have a mover and a seconder for adoption of the agenda, please? Councillor Shell, Councillor Moffat, thank you.
By Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor Moffat, be it resolved that the November 25th, 2020 Halliburton County Council agenda be approved?
Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest today? Hearing none, could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes of October the 28th? Councillor De Volan and Councillor Roberts, thank you.
By Councillor De Volan, seconded by Councillor Roberts, be it resolved that the minutes from the October 28th, 2020 meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated?
All in favor? Carrie. So we have no business arising and no delegations, so we'll move right into our reports. And it looks like our first report is with Ms. White for planning. Good morning, Charlesy.
Good morning. The first report we have today is just Planning Department update. And first item is just a notification to council of a consultation that's going on. The government of Canada is looking at creating a new Canada Water Agency. And there's an online link there if you wish to participate. What they're looking to do is create an agency that'll work together with the provincial and territorial governments, as well as local municipalities, Indigenous communities. And I think they're looking for some varied input, so the link is there should you wish to use it. Climate change update, just a quick note, the working group meetings have been booked for early December. And those meetings will kind of be the kickoff to the county and local municipalities working on implementation of the municipal mitigation plan. As well as looking to gather the 2019 greenhouse gas emissions data for each municipality, which will then obviously be reported back to county council and the local municipal councils. Included here as well under climate change, there's a climate change resource for local municipal government officials. And I have also included the link there just for information purposes. On November 27th, which is this Friday, the planning, as well as in some cases, building and other departments at the local municipalities will be meeting with the county and some affordability affordable housing staff from City of Coortle Lakes. And we're working as a technical team to review applications that have been made for some funding for affordable housing within the county and each of our local communities. So once those projects have been reviewed by the by the team, then they will be forwarded on to the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. And then finally, Land Vision, there is another report following this one, just a summary of the meeting that took place. And the next meeting will be December 14th. The schedule A to this report includes the ongoing planning applications. And schedule B outlines some GIS projects that are underway here at the county. If there's any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Any questions on the planning report? It comes to Roberts.
Thank you. Just one on the affordable housing. So that's only with the group from City of Coortle Lakes. That's not any other providers of affordable housing in the county?
So there was an intake through, yeah, it's the the City of Coortle Lakes as our service provider. And applicants made application for consideration. So if there's some in Dizart, it will be actually Dizart local municipal staff, as well as county staff and a few staff from from that as well.
Any other questions? Could I have a mover and a seconder to accept this report? Councillor Burton, Councillor Moffat, thank you.
By Councillor Burton, seconded by Councillor Moffat, be it resolved that the November 25th, 2020 Staff Report on Planning Department Activities be received for information by Halliburton County Council?
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to your National Disaster Mitigation Funding Intake.
Yes, so thank you. This is actually a request for a resolution of support. We are putting together in partnership with a number of partners, so the two conservation authorities, Trent Severn Waterway, our application under the 2020 intake for federal funding under national natural disaster mitigation. And the deadline is, it was a very short intake, it was only two weeks, so the deadline is actually next week. So really looking for a resolution of support to put an application forward to help support our LiDAR and flood mapping project. And we are currently working through what those deliverables would be. Because as you know, we have in our current budget, a amount for each year that we've been working on. And this would be in addition to that. So we're we're looking at what can we do in addition to the regular program to to get to the completion faster? So with support from the federal government, hopefully, we will be able to do that. So I'm I'm just looking for a resolution of support, please.
Any questions or thoughts, Councillor De Volan?
Yeah, Charlesy, does this, so does this give us the ability to kind of catch up? Because some of this process has been a bit more delayed than some of us would have expected. Is partial catch up, total catch up, if we're successful in this? In terms of where we thought we would be, you know, from a couple of years ago?
I would say a partial catch up. Unfortunately, some of our partners were still dealing with COVID. And the way in which they have their staff working or how they're working. But yes, definitely a partial catch up. And I think we would, we still would be in line for the original completion date, which I believe was 2023. So this again will just help us move that forward.
Any other questions? Could I have a mover and a seconder to approve this request, Councillor De Volan? And Councillor Kennedy?
By Councillor De Volan, seconded by Councillor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council recommends and supports the application of fifty for 50% funding under Stream Two flood mapping and Stream Three flood mitigation plans to be used for hydraulic and hydrologic models, determination of the regulatory flood line of the Gull River and Burnt River Systems, risk assessments, flood mapping, mitigation, planning and prevention through the National Disaster Mitigation Program Funding Intake 2020.
All in favor? Carrie. Okay, so the next item is on the agenda because we have experienced an extraordinary number of blue green algae blooms in the last period of time in a in a unusual period of the year. And Charlesy will have some information to give to us, but it seemed to me that because they were almost throughout the county, that this might be the best place to talk about whether or not we wanted to make a delegation about this, there seems to be another circumstance where there's a gap in in communications between MOE and and ourselves and and a question about responsibility for communicating these blooms. So maybe, Charlesy, you could let us know what you've discovered and we'll have a brief discussion about it.
Thank you very much, Warden. I have contacted and spoken with our health unit, as well as a couple of neighboring health units, just to see if the process is similar. If there's any changes that others maybe are doing that we could utilize here within the county. But the standard process at this point is if there is a request put in for someone by someone to test to see if there is blue green algae in their water. The contact is the Ministry of Environment, Climate Change and Parks. And so they will send out staff to inspect. And if they feel that, yes, there may be some form of algae, because it's not necessarily just blue green. They will identify, do some sampling and some testing and send it away to get toxicity reports. Once those results are back, the ministry shares that information with the health unit, as well as the person or body who reported to the ministry. Then my understanding is the ministry sends a notice as well to the local municipal CAOs. And people who may be in the general area who the ministry feels could be impacted. That so so they call that the local community response. And any health related issues, so dealing with water intakes and proper making sure you have safe water to drink and use in a dwelling. Those questions are then directed from the ministry to the health unit. And the health unit, they do not provide communication over whether it be social media or online identifying the lakes, the locations, any of that information. My understanding from our health unit was in the past that has occurred and there have been complaints from the people who are in those areas due to the impact of the property value or people knowing and really the message the health unit wants to get across is they're happy to share that information with the local municipalities. But it really is the ministry's information to share. And they will work with local residents with regards to how close is this to your water intake? What's the toxicity level? So people understand. Because again, this isn't something you can just boil out of your water to make it safe to drink. And then just notifying people, you know, you shouldn't be swimming and you should be keeping your pets out of the water that may may have these blooms in it. And so that's the information that I've been provided.
Um, I, you know, I would wonder how people could call and ask questions about what what they would do if they don't know that there's a problem. There's just a a real gap in in people actually being notified. I noticed that you said something about MOE would contact people who might be impacted, but that to me means they'll they'll contact the CAO of the municipality.
And They do, yes.
And although they seem to be continuing to say that they maintain responsibility, both MOE and the health unit, they're not advising anybody. And my concern is who's liable when something goes off the rails? I'll go to Andrew at first, because I think you might have some some health information and then Brent.
Okay, thank you, Warden. Actually, Charlesy summed it up pretty well. I did have a board health meeting last week and I brought up the question, but we did have a information from the, now I'm not going to remember his name, but the person who sent me that email that I forwarded to Carol and Liz and and whatnot from the health unit. We had a presentation, the board did regarding blue green algae. And so their job is to sort of show, they've got a little rack card and to 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 show what it looks like and what you should do if you see it. But it isn't their job to do that notification. So they likened it to sort of poison ivy. This is what a leaf of poison ivy looks like. You know, it could be here, but and if you get poison ivy, then, you know, you might this is how you would treat it, etc. So it's their their job, it really is the ministry like, so I see that flow. Maybe the gap in communication is the ministry back to the CAOs and back to the mayors. I I don't know. I think the health unit's doing what they're supposed to be doing in terms of warning of what blue green algae looks like, what to do if you see it. But it isn't their responsibility to then contact Mrs. Jones on Grass Lake to tell her that she has it in front of her property, so.
I hesitant to say what I'm thinking. I'll go to Councillor De Volan and then Councillor Moffat.
My first thoughts are, and that explains why it's a communications muddle. And so thank you, Andrea. I mean, to me, the raison d'etre for for health is to protect public health. And communication of a said risk is the first and primary part of it. So if that's not the case, or or how we interpret this as municipal politician versus the way the ministry do, then then absolutely I'm in favor of having a delegation. Because to me, it's no different than a pandemic. It's just a local area one in a body of water potentially. And if we could take steps to resolve that, if that is indeed their understanding of the responsibility in this, and that's no disrespect to the the local health unit, whatever, if that's the rules under which they march, then then I'm prepared and would like to take issue with the pure ministers in that regard.
My concern is that the the health units aren't consistent in their in their treatment of this. There are some health units that do do communicating out to the public and some that don't. And and I I don't really understand that. And and I I don't know that I accept the example of of putting blue green algae bloom and the results of of consuming that to to poison ivy. But but we'll go ahead to Councillor Moffat.
Thank you. I I agree with the idea of the delegation and I, it's definitely a communication breakdown. And the emails that we've been exchanging here in the background that landed this at the table today is is it's the it's the who's on first game again. So we have lake associations and of course a CHA. And, you know, they all do a really great job. We've never had as many engaged folks in as many engaged lake associations. The disconnect for me is fully understanding the the desire for privacy or secrecy in 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 preserving or preventing any effect on property values. But I would like to think that preservation of life values trumps that. And so while lake associations do a really good job in the vast majority of cases of representing their members, municipalities represent all taxpayers. And so that's what I can't quite reconcile is, you know, the the right to know versus the need to know versus who delivers the message. So it's 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 a bit more complicated than one might originally have thought. And and I think we need to sort that out because I don't, I don't know, as you mentioned, Warden, about liability. You know, is it incumbent upon a municipality to notify its taxpayers? And how can it do that if they're not, if if the municipalities aren't told? So that's sort of the the breadcrumb trail I'm looking for is how do all these groups work together? Instead of in silos for an agreed upon outcome that is in the best interest of informing the public? That's what I'm looking for.
Well, and I I think that, you know, there there might be a benefit to, you know, sort of establishing a small working group to to come to some agreement on how we handle this. And another one of my concerns is that the amount of time that it takes first to call somebody from MOE, then for them to respond and come up and do the testing. The testing is sent off and takes a number of days to get back. By which time somebody's consumed, you know, portions of blue green algae. There's obviously a huge educational portion to this, which I, you know, I know that CHA is looking at. But, you know, we might also through our our environment and stewardship committees consider, I I like the idea of a delegation. And I I wouldn't say that we'd pass a resolution now about that because we've got delegations to Roma on on the agenda later on. Councillor Roberts, you wanted to make further comment?
Thank you. Yeah, so I I'm still unclear on what the delegation is. First of all, who is it to? And what are we asking? Because there is a process. Now, as Charlesy laid out, the process is to report to the to the ministry. And I think if you want, me as your health unit board member rep, I can ask the health unit to do more promotion about what it looks like, what the dangers are and what the process is if you spotted, like, that could be a, you know, they do all kinds of different campaigns, different times of year. But I I see that there is a process in place. So I I'm really unclear what the delegation is all about. And I'm and I didn't mean to lessen the harm to liken it to poison ivy. I'm just saying the health unit's responsibility is to promote health risks. And then they they do have the information there of what to do. And you don't want people reporting to two agencies. It's not the health unit's responsibility to be reporting that back. Charlesy laid that out, so I'm still unclear what you, what other people are looking, other councillors are looking for.
I would go to Councillor De Volan and then Councillor Ryle.
I guess where I would start, I I get the education part, I get the the testing and the protocol leading up to the point that there's a confirmation. My question is, uh, it and maybe I'm not perceiving this the way that it actually is is written in legislation and policy. That once that is, then then somebody has to be responsible for communicating that out. And in my mind, that is clearly not the municipalities. If there's evidence or they can show me policy or legislation that that is the case, I will stand corrected. And once we have that, then we'll need to develop where we go forward. But I'm not sure at this time. And I would definitely like some clarification that after we have positive results, then the nuts and bolts. And then somebody has to have primary responsibility. And to me, it appears that at a certain point, that's kind of coming to us as a municipality. And I guess I have a problem with that. If it's clarified that it indeed that is legally true, then I'll live with it and we'll plan and roll on.
Councillor Ryle?
This sounds, oh, it's not, they're not the same, but it sounds like the problem is similar to the COVID problem and that you have the remedial problems and then you've got the preventive problems. So we've got, we've we've been talking about remedial. Is there any way, shape or form that a prevention or some kind of a reduced opportunity for this stuff to get wherever it needs to go could be addressed? And is there an education program that would enable that? Or are we totally at the mercy of this thing with no way to stop it?
Well, we we've got a climate change action plan. We were working on a shoreline preservation bylaw, which I think is a huge portion of of trying to reduce this risk. There may be other things that we can do, but at this point, I think we really need to resolve this issue of communications and who's responsible. I'm just afraid that that someone is going to consume too much of a blue green algae bloom and get violently ill or 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 lose an animal that's worth thousands of dollars and and sue the municipality for not letting them know that there was a problem. It's it's pretty hard to deal with something if you're not told that there is a problem. Councillor Moffat?
Yeah, I would agree that, you know, notwithstanding the 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 breadcrumb trail at the provincial level, at some point, there should be a conversation about what we're going to do as elected officials between and among our various municipalities and our, what are we going to do? So if there is a blue green algae in one of our municipalities and the CAO is notified and someone mentioned earlier, maybe it goes to the mayors. Great, what do we do with that? So, you know, it's about that internal sharing too, for what reasons and to what outcome? So there's, we have to follow it from top to bottom, I think.
I I should, because I said something about animals, I should say that the health unit has made it quite clear that they're responsible for human health. And it's the homeowner's responsibility to look after their animals. I just, you know, what right now, there have been blue green algae blooms in three of our four municipalities. That says a lot at this time of year. Councillor Roberts?
So so to start with, would you, would the other county councillors like me to ask the staff member at the Board of Health to do a delegation to council, the one that I saw as a report on what the health unit's responsibilities are? We can start from that with that, you know, with the with the Zoom format. It's not that hard to do a delegation. They don't have to come up and they can, would that help?
I I I tend to think no, I mean, it's it's possibly good information. But I don't think it's going to help the communications problem. Or or what we see as there being a communications problem. But I'd I'd look to other members of council to see if they would support that. Councillor Moffat?
That would be a great, and it would also be a bit of motherhood because the the person will come and read from the playbook, which has just been described to us. And I think it's up to us to, whether there's a small working group, is to get the various parties that are already attentive to the to the matter to come together to figure out how we as a as a broader community are going to work together to keep each other safe. And and what's the most important, what's the leading factor in having those conversations or crafting any outcome? And whether that involves a delegation or not, doesn't matter so much, I don't think, hearing the conversation. But it really is about figuring out what we're going to do for our our taxpayers in our community.
So to the question of delegation, just a general show of hands at this point in time to be solidified by a resolution later on. Do you see the need for a delegation? Do you see that there could be some benefit to to doing that? I I know, I I certainly do, but I'm not sure that everyone agrees. Who, a show of hands for who thinks we should do a delegation? So that's four of us.
Madam Warden, do you mean, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I think I misunderstood. Do you mean have someone from the health unit make a delegation to us or for us to make a delegation at Roma?
For us to make a delegation to Roma? Still only four hands? Okay, all right. So if you could craft that as part of our resolution later on, Mr. CAO, that would be good, yes?
Which ministry?
MOE.
Okay.
Councillor De Volan? You wanted to comment?
No, just, we're going to craft the resolution later, that what's ministry or ministries that we might, sometimes when we had issues that overlap ministries. And to me, there's here in health that that we have done them jointly in the past. But but we can discuss that at the later, when we're talking about the delegations for Roma.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to administration reports. And the first is a status report, I believe, from our Public Works Manager. Good morning, Mr. Douglas.
Good morning, Madam Warden. Well, as you can see from today, we are finished our summer maintenance. So just go through, as I usually do with the sort of the three page summary. First with capital, all our road work is complete with the exception of, and it's not going to get completed this year, is the 2019 warranty work for for Miller. We did come to an agreement with them and they're coming back and doing a fair bit of remedial work. Ash fault patching and some re redoing of the surface treatment on three of our roads. Bridges, Hawk Lake Road Bridge, that's a success on time, on budget. I'm pleased with that work. Eagle Lake, a little slower, a little more damage done by the salt over the years, so a lot more chipping away. It is currently half finished. It will remain one lane through the winter. And we've got a number of engineering studies for some of our structures currently underway. And under operations, we are, well, actually looking out the window today, maybe not going to finish the traffic counting, but we'll look for some opening in the in the snow. Finish that up for 2020. We've moved the radar sign that's in front of Tim Horton's on County Road 21. It is now over by the hospital. If you're coming into town, you'll see the speed sign there. The idea there is to leave it there for a little while and then move it up towards Sir Sam's as we approach ski season on Halliburton Lake Road and County Road 14. And then with the with the end of the summer season, I just wanted to reflect back a little bit. We've had one of our best summer seasons thus far, been very, very productive. Completed all of our to do work for this year, which I attribute that to no major fleet breakdowns. Staff have worked very well together. I know it's a COVID year. Should have been more difficult, but we've accomplished everything we wanted to. But I think the major, one of the major reasons is the supervisors and the working for persons have coordinated all the work and they've done a fantastic job. So we've done many kilometers of ditching, replaced 30 plus culverts. Less patching this year, knock on wood. Hundreds of guideposts and warning and regulatory signs have been replaced. Lots of roadside brushing, there's always more, of course. Rail trail brushing is complete. We've re fixed up some of the soft spots on the rail trail, put some some larger gravel down there to firm it up. Two major washouts on the rail trail have been have been firmed up as well. So, you know, all in all, a fantastic summer. Any, any questions?
Any questions on this report, Councillor Roberts?
Just a comment, how nice to hear that that the staff are all working, I mean, it was work hard, but just that coordination piece. And that's, that's really great. We don't, I don't know a lot of the county staff myself and personally, but I just but I just shout out and say thank you to them for, for being able to get all that work done and working well together. It's great, great to hear.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions on this report? Um, I don't have any, uh, identification of the need for a resolution, but I think we do need one to accept the report. Um, if I could have a mover and a seconder to receive this report. Counselor Burton, Counselor Roberts, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Burton, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Be it resolved that the November 2020 status reports on capital projects, operations and road maintenance be received for information by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you so much, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now, uh, going to be receiving financial, uh, reports, so we would call on our treasurer.
Good morning, Boardman and Counselors.
Morning.
Did you want me to go ahead with the check register?
Um, yes, please. And all of the reports that you've got.
Alrighty, so the check register for October 2020 totaled $3,423,862.53.
Any question? I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, I was waiting for you for the next one.
Okay, is there a mover and a seconder to receive the check register? Counselor Devolin? Counselor Moffett? Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Devolin, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the check register for October 2020. And further, that it be recommended that the check register for October 2020 with checks, E F Ts and P A Ps totaling $3,423,862.53 be hereby approved.
All in favor? Carried. All right, with payroll register?
The payroll register for October had three pays and totaled $650,016.26.
Any questions? Uh, mover and seconder to receive this report? Counselor Shell, Counselor Kennedy?
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the 2,000, on the payroll register for October through 2020. And further, that the payroll register for October 2020 with net direct deposits totaling $650,016.26 be hereby approved.
All in favor? Carried. Year-to-date actuals, looks like we're doing quite well.
Yep, we're on track for the end of the year. Um, year-to-date actuals at the end of October, um, operating expenses, we had spent 83.2%. Um, capital expenses, capital purchases, we'd spent 57.5 um, of the annual budget, that budget levy, that meant we had used 62.3% um, in 10/12, so the annual budget is actually 83, 83.33%. So we are on budget right now. Included in the amounts also are the amounts related to COVID. So, um, there's in total $338,719 of COVID expenses included in those.
Any questions on this report? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive it? Counselor Roberts and Counselor Moffett, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the year-to-date revenue and expenditures as at October 31st, 2020. And further, that the year-to-date revenue and expenditures as at October 31st, 2020 be hereby approved.
All in favor? Carried. And you're also going to report on the tariff and fees?
Yep, um, the proposed, uh, 2021 tariff of fees by law is included. Um, there's been some minor changes. We added, uh, an option to purchase a county flag for $80. We changed some of the pricing, uh, minor increases. And otherwise, the rest is just sort of administrative changes. That's it.
Are there any questions on the tariff of fees? Hearing none, could I have a mover and a seconder to accept the, uh, report? Mover and a seconder? Counselor Moffett, Counselor Kennedy?
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the proposed 2021 tariff fees by law. And that a tariff of fees by law reflecting the proposed changes be presented for approval.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
So I've got a couple of reports from our Director of I T. Morning, Mr. March.
Morning, Madam Clinton, members of council. So the first report I have, um, in front of you is given a, a postmortem of the email server outage we had a couple of weeks ago. I think everyone's familiar with the, uh, the issues we had over November 9th, leading in November 10th. So I just felt it was important to give council a rundown of, of what happened and what we did and the reason for the, uh, uh, the length of that outage. I didn't want to get too much into it at this point, unless anybody has any specific questions about what happened, but hopefully it was clear about what I had in my, in my report.
I think you've outlined what happened. Um, are there any questions about this? Interests going forward? Um, okay, could I have a mover and a seconder to accept this report? Counselor Devolin, Counselor Shell, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Devolin, seconded by Counselor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the November 25th, 2020 report on the email server outage.
All in favor? Carried. All right, we'll talk about security incident response policies.
Thank you. So my next report is the draft policy for your consideration, uh, information security incident response policy. It's been helpful. Um, if you recall, the county's I T department underwent a cyber resilient review last fall. And one of the areas identified for improvement was in incident management response. And so this policy was created to address this deficiency. The plan basically defines the steps to be taken in the event of an information security incident. So examples of such incidents could be theft or loss of sensitive info, uh, an extensive malware outbreak, ransomware outbreak. Basically, anything that significantly disrupts the county's information services. Uh, the policy lays out of staff roles and responsibilities. Uh, in the event of an incident, we also included some workflows for staff to follow. Again, take them through the process from start to finish, and hopefully it's a policy you never have to use. So unless council would like for me to walk through it step by, or paragraph by paragraph, I'm more than happy to take any questions you may have.
Counselor Devolin?
I have no interest in that, Mike. Uh, having, having said that, with what's gone on in the province and elsewhere with municipalities, I feel, have felt since, uh, the, in the absence of this, a bit naked in case something happened. And, uh, definitely in support of, uh, moving forward, uh, with this. So that if we have the misfortune that it happened, it's like emergency management, uh, in a broader sense, uh, that, that we have, uh, a, a, a policy that, that's evolved, that we've done on due diligence and, and we'll know what to do. Uh, both in terms of staff and, and in terms of us as, as politicians to know what will and how what will happen. It just will clarify a whole bunch of things and won't make it any less pleasant, but at least we'll understand what is and is not going to happen. So thank you, uh, for this work.
Yeah, um, I, I thank you for that, Counselor Devon. I, I, I know that, uh, Mike has been taking a deep dive into policy development in the last while to protect us and, uh, and it, it's much appreciated. Uh, can I have a mover and a seconder to receive this report? Counselor Devolin, Counselor Moffett, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Devon, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the November 25th, 2020 staff report on the draft information security incident response policy. And that Halliburton County Council adopts the information security incident response policy as presented.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'd be bringing in our, uh, our chief, Tim, to talk about the assessment center and give a bit of an overview.
Good morning. Good morning, Warden, members, members of council. Nice snowy day today. Um, I just presented this, uh, I brought this report to, just to give, um, a council an update where we are with the assessment center. Um, if you'd asked me this time last year, what my major task was for the fall would be to, um, the logistics of staffing and, uh, um, operating a, uh, an assessment center for a pandemic virus, I would have said that, um, I don't think so, but, uh, here we are. So, um, I have to say it's been a, uh, a, a huge challenge, um, this year for, for all of us and everyone that's been participating and, um, just, um, sort of to go from where we started to where we are, um, when this all started back in March, uh, the, um, uh, the province, uh, basically had to task the hospitals with, um, staffing assessment centers. Um, Triple H S originally, um, wasn't going to, um, participate as they didn't have appropriate, uh, a number of staff to, to, to do this, so. Um, but, uh, they approached the family health team and medical center and us as the paramedic services in the county, um, to see if we could help. And, uh, quickly the funding was made available to, or told that the hospitals told that the funding was available. So we quickly scrambled together and, um, uh, came up with a plan and we've been operating the assessment center since, uh, the end of March. Um, originally it was, uh, a tent and a drive-through, but, uh, as the bad weather began to, to arrive on us, uh, we had to figure out logistics for the winter. Uh, we had a trailer on site, which we, um, maneuvered into position, um, to, um, to have an inside, um, assessment center um, for those people needing swabs, uh, either asymptomatic or symptomatic for COVID. Um, so I have to say that, uh, the logistics of, uh, preparing for the winter, uh, were quite a challenge. And I, I really have to, uh, thank, um, Counselor Roberts for all her assistance, uh, in helping us, um, uh, with her staff, uh, to maneuver the trailer into position where it was, um, easily, uh, accessible for snow plowing, um, but made it easily accessible for those people, uh, coming to, uh, be tested, uh, for COVID. Um, along with, um, the other logistics of, uh, getting people in and out of the parking lots and Dizer supplying the tickets that we give to the people that show up for assessment, so they can, um, exit the parking lot, um, without paying. Um, so it's been, uh, it, it has been a huge challenge and, and it's still ongoing, but I think we're pretty well prepared for winter. Um, the last steps are that the company that, um, uh, the trailer is, uh, rented from is going to skirt around, they're actually, I think they're going to take the tires off and lower the trailer a bit to make, uh, the steps a little bit more accessible. And, uh, then they're going to skirt around the, um, uh, the perimeter of it to just keep the snow from blowing in. And, um, and, and that's where we are. So we have two paramedic staffing it, uh, the staffing changes, um, depending on the, uh, the requirement of swabs per week. Uh, it's been pretty quiet the last little while, um, but we could see, the problem is, is it's very dynamic and changes very quickly. Um, with certain areas going to orange, uh, presently, we're not in the orange category. But, uh, if you go to the orange category, then people need swabs every week to go see loved ones or visit loved ones at, um, long-term care facilities. Um, right now it's two weeks, uh, so that may change in the very near future. But, uh, this week we're staffed four days, um, but next week we're staffing five days, uh, through the week. Um, in anticipation of, uh, some more demand. So, um, that's where we are right now. And, um, again, we're operational for the winter and as long as we need to, um, uh, staff, uh, the assessment center, um, to provide this, um, the service for our community.
Thank you for your report. Um, you know, on behalf of the county, I'd really like to thank you and, and all your staff for all the work that they've done. I know that this has been a, an extraordinary project that you've been working on. And we really appreciate, uh, uh, Counselor Roberts for your work with the assessment center working group and, and helping them, uh, uh, just kind of coordinate things on your property. Um, I'm just wondering, are there any questions on this report? Counselor Devon and Counselor Roberts?
Just, just to comment, I mean, uh, gleaning only what I did through the press. Uh, Counselor Roberts took a bit of heat about some of the costs and things associated with that, uh, center. And I would like to thank her and Dizer, uh, for their efforts on behalf of all of us. And I'm not presuming to say we'll pick up the tab or whatever, but when one municipality bears costs that really accrues, uh, the benefits to the rest of us, that if it got of a certain scale, whatever that's appropriate, I would hope a conversation would come back here, uh, to the county that we could talk about. If, uh, you know, it was, it was a burden and a hardship on them, uh, doing on behalf. If it's within the scope of what they can do, uh, on behalf of the rest of us, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone at Dizer as well as our own county staff.
Um, uh, there have been some conversations between, uh, Counselor Roberts and myself. Um, it's been a, an, an item of discussion in our E O C. Um, at, at the present time, I think that all the costs associated with the center are covered. But there may be, uh, it, it may come back to us at some point in time that we'll have to, uh, to look at additional costs and, and how they might be shared out or, or carried by the county. Counselor Roberts, did you had a comment or question?
Yes, yeah, well, all this gushing, gee, gosh, thanks. But you know what? That's our job, right? That's, we, we do our job. And, uh, that the assessment center was, uh, put in that location, uh, very quickly. Uh, we were at Dizer happy to help. Um, but then when we knew that this pandemic was not going away anytime soon and we had to prepare for the winter, it was important to have an agreement. I'm sure all of you county counselors, staff included, can understand why, uh, you know, legally, we needed something. It's because they were operating, uh, a, a, a service, uh, and had structures on our property. So that was our main goal is to have some kind of mainly liability agreement. And Tim's been fantastic. He somehow got, uh, promoted to be the assessment center chair when he missed a meeting. So that's, uh, so kudos to, to Tim and his staff. And also, uh, Mike Rutter has been excellent. And, you know, there was some misinformation in the press and it's one of those things, once, once it spun out that way, it's really hard to pull it back. So, um, personally, I just had to say, well, I knew what Dizer was doing. I knew what the county was doing. I knew what the parties were all doing. And I'm really happy to say that we have an agreement, uh, and in place. It's fair to, um, what the costs are, it's fair to all parties. And it was never our intent to kick them out. It was never our intent to profit. The, the word rent was really, uh, just some very basic costs. And, um, I'm hoping that, you know, it is a, a quieter winter here in Halliburton County. Let's hope that we can keep the cases down. Let's hope that, uh, our assessment center can handle if we have another surge or another, uh, situation. And I know that there are some rapid tests coming and I know, uh, Dr. Stook said that'll be a game changer, so step forward. So anyway, I'm happy to report, we have an agreement, just got to get the signatures on it and it was a process. And, um, yeah, I, I took a little sucker punch, but whatever, I'm still here. So I know the truth. Anyway, thank you all for your support.
Thank you for that. Okay, could we have a mover and a seconder to receive this report? Counselor Roberts, Counselor Moffett, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the update report on the COVID assessment center.
All in favor? Carried. Thanks so much, Tim. Right, I guess we'd be looking for the Director of Tourism. Now, how are you going to hand us our option, our cover option?
I've got a secret way coming to you. Good morning, Warden and Counselors. Uh, as you know, it's time to discuss our 2021, uh, cover for the tourism map and guide. A few, uh, notes before I show them on screen. Um, as you know, in the past, we generally feature a number of different activities and they're sort of in separate boxes. But approaching 2021 and with the But approaching 2021 and with the restrictions and, you know, unknowns around COVID-19, we wanted the cover to have more of a classic cottage feel. And when we talk about the destination management plan in a couple of weeks, that aligns nicely with that as well. We have had some comments from stakeholders in the past that we've shown a lot of activities, but we've never really shown that cabin or accommodation experience. So this year, the recommendations, you'll see the two cover options coming forward. The covers are a little softer, almost a little ethereal. And it does speak to social distancing in a not such an obvious way and and what else do I need to say? I've got a couple of notes. Let me quickly look. I think I've covered everything. So I will ask Mike March to pull the two options up on screen. So you'll note a couple of things. There's a boundary line in yellow around the imagery and that is actually the county line. So those of us in the know would know that that's actually the, the proper outline of the county. And you can see the distance there between the performers. You can see a cabin, which is actually the first time we've ever shown an actual physical building in our covers. And the Fisher person there on option A, it's actually the first time we've shown fishing as an activity back seven years. And I do have the past covers if there's any curiosity on, on what was on those past covers, but I guess I will pass it on to, back to you for discussion.
It looks like the abominable snowman in, in option B.
That is a hiker and I suppose we could tweak that image out, but myself, I'm leaning toward option A if I'm honest, but
Yeah, it doesn't look like a hiker. Looks like a Sasquatch. I'm sorry. Counselor Devolin?
I'll be brief. As a newly minted grandfather, obviously the one with the child.
Counselor Moffett?
As much as I would love to vote for Sasquatch because it would be funny, I just can't do it. So it has to be, it has to be the fishing kid.
Counselor Shell?
I had the exact same thought, Warden Danielson, that that was, I, in fact, I'm sitting here pulling my face closer to the screen thinking, everybody can see what I'm doing. And I didn't want to appear that I didn't know what it was and maybe thought it was my eyes, but I'm glad everybody commented that they thought it also looked like a Sasquatch. Definitely the little, the little Fisher person on the left is also my, my choice.
Yeah, it's a sweet picture. Other, Counselor Ray?
Yeah, I think A as well too, although I, I wish we could figure out who that Sasquatch really is, but I think A is the right choice.
Counselor Roberts?
Unmute there. So yeah, okay, so option B is out. And I'm doing the same as Lisa, either you've got the camera right there and I'm like going zoom, coming in closer and I, and yes, I, I love the idea that the outline is the county. I think that's very clever. And my only comment is, I don't know, it's like when I, you know, you just puts up on the screens, it wasn't included in our package. So we have that first impression look and I just feel like they're fishing in the clouds. I, maybe it's, maybe it's my screen. Is that a, I don't know. I like, I like the fire. I like the cabin. I like the woods. I like the singers. I just, I, and I don't dislike children fishing. It just, my first impression is why is that person fishing on top of his head? But that's
You know, I didn't have that impression at all. I just sort of, it's, it's like a, an image over an image that, that, you know, kind of shows more opportunities. I, I'm hearing support for option A. Is everyone pleased with option A or are there any recommendations about change? Counselor Burton?
Thank you. I tried this a little while back, Liz. I guess you didn't see my hand, but I'm quite impressed with, with option A. I think it's very, very well done and it represents us very well and I'm really pleased with the outline that they have put on it.
So we're agreed, option A. All right, I have a mover in a second or for a resolution on that? Counselor Devolin, Counselor Burton?
Moved by Counselor Devolin, seconded by Counselor Burton. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council selects cover option A for the 2021 Explore My Halliburton Islands Tourism Publication and direct staff to move forward with print production.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you for your work on that, Amanda. Okay, so the last item under administration is a discussion about ministerial delegations to Roma. I think we've, we've agreed that one is required. Further discussion, you had a thought the other day about this, Counselor Devolin? Go ahead.
Well, just, that, just that I think, because it has implications for two ministries, like we've done in the past with flood mitigation and whatever. I think that the health and environment, both of them, it should be copied to both of them. Because there's those two ministries and ourselves collectively, municipally in our communities. And we just need to understand and/or lobby for some clarification or modification and, and how this appears to work.
Counselor Moffett?
Um, I was on the Roma delegation forum the other day for something on Gulf Coast Highlands is doing. And pleased to say that they've, they've expanded it beyond 140 characters. Maybe they took a, a bit of a hit for that. But it does, it does say, it does say right on it that they want you to take one issue to one ministry. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't hit up one of their ministries after, afterwards, like mail it out or something. But I mean, it, it does, it just be warned, it does say that right on the application or on the delegation request form.
So given that it's the primary responsibility of M O E, I, I would almost think that that's where we should go. But I would look for other thoughts. Counselor Burton and then Counselor Devolin?
I, I totally agree, but my thought was as well the Ministry of Health. And whether we follow up with a letter to them or, or just whatever, if we're not going to pick them for a delegation, but certainly the M O E, but I think we should somehow contact the, the Minister of Health as well.
Counselor Devolin?
I, I won't disagree.
So I, I'm, I'm hearing delegation to M O E with follow-up to the Ministry of Health. Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. Just, just to follow up the, the question that I asked earlier when this topic came up. So what are we asking? I, and I'm not able to attend. I didn't register for Roma. Dicer has a council meeting that, the one of the days, so I didn't register. But what are we asking? What, what is the delegation ask?
Counselor Devolin?
Uh, my question and then go back to what I earlier said today is once this has been identified, in the end, in terms of communication and responsibility to the public to protect them and save them from harm, who's, who's primary? Like, uh, does, you know, the M O E, when they get stunned, does that clearly go on to health? Does it go on to health and then to us? I just clearly want to know when push comes to shove, in the public view, who, who will be held, if it goes to court someday, who's going to be primary in this, in this mess? And if it's us, and, and that is the way it is, and it's not subject to change, then obviously we'll make plans according to that. But to me, at this point, I have no idea where that primary responsibility and given the fact that the Ministry of Environment is the one that identifies it and certifies that it indeed has happened, then I think the discussion has to start there and then flow on from there. So that's just, once it happens, who's, who's, who's on the hook?
Yeah, you know, they, they continue to say, babe being M O E, that, that it is their primary responsibility, that there's no liability to the municipalities, but there's still a gap there for me. You know, people need to be advised that, that, that there's a risk to them and, and they, they certainly can't take action if they don't know. So I, I think we need some clarification on that. And if it means that, you know, ultimately they're responsible, but we decide to, to establish some kind of communications plan, well, so be it. It, it can't be that difficult to, to make announcements on the local radio stations and, and have something on the the websites of the, of the local newspapers, our own websites. I mean, there's, there's a, there are ways to get messages out. I, I know that the health unit talked about the, the challenges associated with, with mailouts because so many of the, of the mailouts go to their, you know, their primary home and they may be here. And, you know, so that they never really get the official written notification and that takes too long anyway. So I, I think hopefully that answers your question, Counselor Roberts. Yeah, okay. So are there any other delegations that you see as being necessary for this particular conference? Hearing none. Have you got a resolution crafted? Mr. Cao, okay, could I have a mover in a second or and we'll hear the resolution? Counselor Shell, Counselor Devolin?
We have resolved that Halliburton County Council directs staff to request ministerial delegations from the following. M O E C P, read blue-green algae communication protocols.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, moving into reports from external boards and agencies. First is the health unit. Are there any other comments that you'd like to make, Counselor Roberts?
Um, not on those minutes particularly, but that we did have a meeting last week where we had a really thorough explanation of what happens when someone it tests positive and the communication that takes place and the calls that make place, take place rather. So they're not in these minutes or in this report, but and I'm really pleased to say luckily our health unit hasn't been so overwhelmed like other areas that they definitely do the contact tracing. They don't tell the positive person, go and call your own contacts because we're too busy. So they are doing that and some of those calls are very emotional and very difficult to make. People often feel guilty when they find out that they're positive and they were asymptomatic, but test positive and that there's so it's a, it is quite a process, the, the calls that, that take place. And so that was, I found very, you know, it's the human element, right? You, you're calling to tell someone that they, what, what they need to do next and making sure that they have what they need. Are they able to self-isolate? They even get the supports for them. So if there's somebody that maybe doesn't know how to do online shopping or all that kind of stuff. There's, there's a lot of support and a lot of, lot of work going into the contact tracing and the whole COVID situation with, at the health unit as obvious, but that's it.
It, it's, it's nice to hear. I, I think people do need to hear that, that background, that human aspect of, of the work that goes on. Everybody takes those sorts of things for granted. I, I was interested to hear it at our last E O C meeting, the health unit rep saying that there was a considerable turnover in the people that do that work. It, it's just that it's hard on them. Okay, thank you for that. Anything from point in time?
Nothing new at this time.
Okay.
Pretty key with COVID.
There is nothing much to speak of on the Wardens Caucus. We've just reconfirmed the same priorities basically for next year as, as what we had agreed upon earlier in the year when we had to, to make a pretty quick change to, to things like to broadband the seniors homes, the economic recovery, municipal recovery remain the priorities. We will be having a special meeting, I think it's next Friday, to receive and discuss the successful proponent for the cell gap project. So there'd be a little bit more discussion about Eorn and the work that they're doing then. Otherwise, there are no further general business meetings for the Wardens Caucus until the beginning of the year, at which point they would have their, their their, their first meeting of the year, which consists of basically some information and, and, you know, welcoming the new members and trying to solidify those priorities and, and budget information for the following year. Unless there's any questions, we'll go on to joint and social housing. Any activity there, Counselor Devolin?
Uh, we meet December the second, next week and that because they're quarterly and that's the one, although it's virtual, that technically usually happens here, so I cheer that.
Okay, thank you. A little bit of an update on professional recruitment, if I could maybe ask Counselor Moffett to speak to that?
Surprise.
Sorry. It's, it's, it's your portfolio.
You didn't tell me. I was gonna have to say something today. Well, actually, we had a really good meeting yesterday and looking at some examining documentation and sort of reformatting some language. And there will be, actually, I'm gonna have to tip to the C I O to ask if there's anything further we should or could say at the moment. It's just, the council's gonna see some things coming forward to further formalize, organize the program in terms of in, in light of how it's matured and is maturing. So it's, it's good news. It's all, it's all in the, it's all on the upside. So I don't know if Mr. C I O has anything else you want to add there?
I don't think so. It's really just, as you say, the, the program has evolved and I think with recruiter, she's, well, or she's becoming more aware of what the issues are and what our, our program needs to look like in order to effectively recruit. And so we're going to bring back some recommendations on what that could look like and, and, and see where county council wants us to go.
And you should see that in December. And, and I, I just to add that our recruiter is doing a really good job. We're seeing some successes there and that, that I'm really pleased to see. Hopefully it'll continue in that vein. Nothing on the land claim. I thought we were going to change that heading.
When we, when we amend the procedural bylaw, which we're in the process of doing hopefully in December.
Okay, thank you. Anything on the library board? We have a, a meeting coming up on December the eighth. Counselor Roberts, anything that you wanted to?
Just, uh, nothing, you know, not, not when you read the minutes, but just knowing how important the libraries are in our community. It was really a desire for the board to as safely as possible, get the libraries open as safely as possible. Do curbside pickup, but also have the physical buildings open. And so not in those minutes, but we know that the, the two larger branches, Dicer and Minden have been open for quite some time. And the smaller branches are open. And actually, the numbers are really quite impressive in terms of how many people, you know, still want to go in and get a book or go in and use the computer and, and use that service. So it's, they've been doing a great job to make sure we are still providing library service in the county.
Counselor Devolin and then Counselor Moffett?
Uh, I'd like to express a thank you to the library board and staff for the Minden Library Branch serving as, as a, as a home for provincial announcement a few weeks ago, whatever. They were staff there were very good in supportive and facilitating that with the premier's advance team and all the, all the complications that come with that. So I'd just like to say thank you.
No comment on that. Thank you. Counselor Moffett?
Thanks. I just wanted to circle back on what Counselor Roberts had said and, and I did note in the library board meeting that there was understandably an awful lot of angst around the decision related to the Dorset branch, which was transferred or I guess transitioned to a, a book depot program. And the numbers were ma- remaining very strong. So the service is still being provided in, in the community and people are still getting books and it's all very successful. So just wanted to, just to make note of that, that sometimes transition, change is difficult, but transitions are not necessarily a death knell for services.
Thank you for that because it's, it's something that might be considered going forward in, in other areas. Counselor Roberts?
Yes, and just one last thing that we, that we're working on is we, the, the agreements between this, the buildings to the municipality, the work needed, the sort of, yeah, I just remembered that at our last meeting because they're not in these minutes. Is that we really want as, as the municipal reps on the library board, we want to have clear understanding to make sure when the, the, the buildings that we own, they, the library staff put in requests for, you know, this door needs fixing, this Requests for, you know, this door needs fixing, this lamp needs replacing, et cetera. Some of them are major, some of them are minor, but there isn't really a process to follow through and we don't really have clear. Agreements between the responsibilities of the municipality and and the library. A lease agreement with no money, let's call it a responsibility agreements. So it's the desire to make sure that those things are clear. It's a desire to make sure that we know if. The library staff have put in the request for these repairs. That they get done in a timely fashion, so.
Yeah, it was quite clear from the list that we saw that some of the things were, were not minor. They weren't, you know, nobody's being fussy. When you can't feel secure in the bathroom without somebody walking in on you, that's a problem. Those sorts of things we really need to fix. So we're, we've asked staff to, to work on some kind of formal lease agreement. So that the responsibilities are laid out clearly. Okay, could we have a resolution to receive the reports from external boards and agencies? Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Shell, Counselor Kennedy?
With my counselor Shell, second by Counselor Kennedy, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the following. The approved minutes from the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty Halliburton Core to Pine Ridge District Health Unit Board of Health Minutes. And the approved September ninth, two thousand twenty minutes and the October twenty fourteen, two thousand twenty draft minutes of the Halliburton County Public Library.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, the next report is the land division activity report. Our director planning be speaking to that.
Good morning, Warden and members of county council. This is a summary of the last meeting, which was in November. Sorry, my screen froze. And it's just a summary of the decisions made by the land division committee as well as a year to date total to the end of October. You'll note that there's a number of. I guess we could call them rights of ways and lot additions, which are exceeding the number of new lots created. And I wanted to identify that hopefully in December we will bring forward a report. As you may recall, last year we did showing, you know, where these new lots are being created and then putting those against the growth targets in our official plan. So you'll see that coming forward, hopefully next month. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We look forward to seeing that report. Are there any questions? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the report? Counsel Burton, Counselor Devolin, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Burton, seconded by Counselor Devol and be it resolved that the November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty staff report on land division activity be received for information by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? Carried. Other external boards and agencies, any report from the Ontario Good Roads Association?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Road School, it's quite interesting that our numbers with, with our road school. Are way up and we're trying to figure out with the, with the virtual classrooms and. We're trying to figure out just exactly why the numbers are up so high. Some of us figure that it could be possibly, there's some savings there, travel, lodging, et cetera. But I'm really pleased that in these times that the, the numbers are up. We're busy working on our conference, our virtual conference. We're getting quite a bit of interest. With it. With our, with our split a couple of years ago from Roma, there was concerns that. We probably wouldn't get the political side of our conference and it was quite interesting when we. Opened our registration, which was a couple of weeks ago. The first registration was a politician, so that that made me quite happy, but the, they are, the numbers are up with our registration as well.
I think you'll always find that there's a number of politicians that will not be able to resist good roads. Any question? Any questions or comments about the upcoming conference or this report? Okay, moving on, Counselor Devol and do you have anything to report on Eorn activities?
We continue to meet and as you'll know with your next Warden caucus proceeding with. Potentially a successful bidder in this. I can tell you that for some months I'm not gonna be able to say very much, but I'm jumping up and down and. I'm over the moon, I guess, is without betraying anything, I would say better, better than I might have hoped for, although. Nothing's done until it's done, but I'm just saying is potentially for, for the people in Halliburton County. Better, better than, than, than expected from my perspective and and CEO Rudder, would you concur?
I have no comment to make. Yes, but it is a very sensitive time as the procurement process continues.
And we know that we've got a good man on the Eorn Board to make sure that we've. Halliburton County is well represented. We look forward to the future news. Anything on poverty reduction, Counselor Devol?
Not at this time. I was, I missed their last meeting because of a conflict with other meetings.
Okay, I, if it's all right with everyone, I'm going to continue on until we get to closed. At which point we can have a break when, when we're going into close. I think that might be the, the best timing for that. Meeting calendar is next. On the agenda, there was, there's a couple of little changes that I gave to Mike. Counselor Roberts?
Yeah, and a couple of changes. I should have just sent these along ahead. Sorry, Dicer is not meeting on the eighth. We're not doing the whole. And we meet on the eleventh for our budget meeting, not the tenth. As well, we meet on the fifteenth. And I have, I'm not sure when the right time to bring that up is. I have some concerns that my meeting might not be done and it's the inaugural meeting. And that I did talk to Mike about, but maybe I should save that for. When we talk about the inaugural meeting, I don't know.
Any other changes, Counselor Burton?
Probably a change and I'm not sure if it's important, but we do have a real round table on the second.
Any other, the only other change that I noted was that the library board is listed for Wednesday, the ninth, and in fact, we will be meeting on the eighth. There was a conflict there with Elgonpin Highlands in their virtual Christmas. So the board kindly agreed to change the date there. Okay, any, if there are no other comments or changes on the calendar. We will move on to long term service awards and Andrea Bull will be presenting that information.
Good morning, Warden and Council.
Good morning.
As you know, typically we would distribute our long term service awards in person on a regular scheduled council meeting. But as county council isn't currently meeting in person, the Warden has chosen to recognize our twenty twenty recipients through the report process. And then the awards will be distributed in person by the employees directors following today's meeting. So I'd like to acknowledge the following staff who will, who will be receiving a long term service award in twenty twenty. I'll start with our public works department, Brian Maholland, engineering assistant, forty years. Fred Simmons, seasonal laborer, twenty years. Moving on to the paramedic services. And there's a large list of them this year. Bradley Robinson, paramedic, twenty years. Christopher Parish, community paramedic, duty officer, twenty years. George Sharp, paramedic, duty officer, twenty years. Jim Young, deputy chief operations, twenty years. Jeff Schultz, paramedic duty officer, twenty years. Randy Cox, paramedic, twenty years. Adam Payne, paramedic, fifteen years. Chris Barrow, paramedic, twenty years. Curtis Lane, paramedic, twenty years. Glenn Story, paramedic, twenty years. Stephen Wulst, paramedic, twenty years. And last but not least, myself, human resources manager, fifteen years.
Thank you for that. You know, on behalf of us all, I particularly like to thank you, Andrea. And congratulate you on the time that you've been here, along with everybody who's on this list. We're really and truly fortunate. To have a group like this of dedicated employees that have stayed with us and. We, we couldn't be in a better position when we see a list like this and see how long some people have stayed with us. So I would offer our congratulations to everyone on the list and. Hope that you continue to stay with us and I gather that the actual awards will be handed out by department heads. Any comments or questions? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive this report? Counselor Roberts and Counselor Kennedy?
With my Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Kennedy, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report outlining the two thousand twenty long term service award recipients.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Then we move on to a report from our CEO on the nomination results for Warden.
Thank you. As, as noted in the report, we did receive two. Nominations for the position of Warden and they were both qualifying nominations. We have Counselor Brett, Brett Devol and Liz Danielson both have submitted nominations. The, as we have discussed at length, the election will take place. On in December and we will be doing that virtually. We will be sending out detail on all of that in the near future. And so once this, once this report is received by county council, each of the candidates. Will be given an opportunity to address their peers for ten minutes. And, and then expressing why they would like to stand for the position and. And that would be done in the order in which the nominations were received. So Counselor Devol and we'll go first and Warden Danielson will go next.
Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive this report? Counselor Moffett and Counselor Burton?
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Burton, be it resolved that the nomination results for the position of Halliburton County Warden for two thousand twenty one be received for information by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? Carried.
Or Counselor Devol, sorry.
I just unmuted. I proceed?
Yes, please.
All right, my first comment, I won't take anywhere near the time allotted for this. Good morning, fellow members of county council. It's an honor and a privilege to present myself as a candidate for the position of Warden for Halliburton County. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Counselor Robertson Real for the moving and seconding my nomination for Warden. As a former Warden, it's clear to me now the responsibilities and challenges in successfully filling the role than the first time. In leadership's best results achieved by transparency, communication and involvement of all of county council in our business and I would endeavor to work to that end. I would not be able to consider the additional time to be required to fulfill this role if it weren't for the support of my family, my Minden Hills Council and more specifically, my deputy mayor Shell. You know, county council has reached the midpoint of our term and the second half of the term will likely involve significant changes and challenges as to how municipal government operates. And deliver services. COVID nineteen evolving regulatory requirements, rapid population growth, both seasonal and permanent. Tight labor markets and future diminishing federal and provincial fundings will require an evolution of how municipal governments will function in the near and distant future. Service delivery reviews, asset management, working from a distance using technology and connectivity. While moving to a more paperless approach to operations, offer an opportunity to take a proactive stance to shape and. Form the county for the future. Many of the activities of county and municipal staff and counselors are all ready, working to achieve these objectives. Municipal leaders must be mindful to not lose the benefits of the current structure and operations while endeavoring to achieve. Actual positive results in the changes that may be considered. The present members of council have already proven the willingness to tackle tough issues using our diversity of life experiences and strength. To provide thoughtful and respectful dialogue and negotiations. These characteristics will be clearly required and even more so in the next two years of our mandate as we deal with the matters already clearly ahead of us. Changes that will need to occur in Halliburton will involve municipal, county, city of Corthalakes and Eastern Ontario governing bodies to achieve the best possible outcomes. I have a keen interest in nurturing these relationships to deliver outcomes that cannot be achieved by county efforts alone. Lastly, I'm not an unknown quantity to any of you in the county chamber. By now, all of you pretty well know my strengths and weaknesses that I would bring to the position of Warden. I would ask that you would work with me collaboratively if I'm elected to provide the best outcomes in our decisions. Do not be afraid to point out my shortcomings so that the people of Halliburton have the best representation possible. I wear my heart on my sleeve, as you know, and I'll put in the time and energy to fulfill the role if you collectively support my candidacy. Thank you to all the members of county council for the opportunity to stand for the office of Warden. Thank you.
And Counselor Danielson?
Thank you and forgive me for following my notes. I find myself a little bit nervous. And I would like to start by sincerely thanking both Counselors Burton and Moffett for supporting my nomination. And I'd like to say how proud I've been to represent you all and I, over the last two years. And to represent Halliburton County as a whole, it's meant a lot to me and it's, it's made me very proud. I do acknowledge fully that extending my term might seem rather extraordinary to some. But it's not the first time that that's happened, that someone has held the position for three years, particularly during a time when continuity is key. I do believe that I've served the county well in an open, unbiased and businesslike fashion and, and my focus has always been. On ensuring that the business at hand is taken care of and I follow the agreed upon will and path of council. This has been an extraordinary year as I'm sure that we would all agree to in fulfilling the duties of this particular job. I know you've all had difficult times as a result of the pandemic. The workload has been immense and. You know, we've all just had to slog our way through it. And unfortunately, it has come with, done of some of the perks that do come with the job of being the Warden. But that's not why I've been in, in, in this position. I just have tried to remain steadfastly available every single day since the pandemic began. For me, some of the most compelling arguments for my continuing in the position is continuity and, and I've made this point to all of you. I believe the continuity is vital. We do remain under a state of local emergency and I've been working closely with all of the department heads since early March. And continuity during such times brings consistency in decision making and, and I truly believe that it's helpful for staff. As they've been navigating their way through these uncertain times and, and not just here at work, but at home as well. We've all been feeling the impact of the pandemic. The Warden's Caucus outlined a number of priorities and initiatives for the year and we're unable to achieve some of them. However, the EOWC has proven to be nimble in reassessing those priorities and working hard to help the provincial government move forward with issues like long-term care, paramedic service, broadband, and economic recovery for both business and municipalities. And I've been proud to take part in those discussions and help in the decision-making. There have been numerous discussions about the importance of continuity even within the EOWC membership, particularly during these quickly changing times. And I know that some of the membership or many of the membership actually look forward to my return. Should I be fortunate? The pandemic again has challenged us all. We've all had to deal with a very different type of workload and assume responsibilities that have made our earlier goals and objectives that we set pretty hard to achieve. I think as Deputy Mayor that I've been able to ease the workload of all of the heads of council a little bit. And I've been pleased to be able to do that because you've all had to shoulder a lot more. And will have to continue to do so for some period of time. The public is about to receive the Service Delivery Review Report and we're about to enter into some pretty high-level discussions on areas of collaboration. I know that both Dyserd and Minden Hills could, and some of these discussions have a lot more at stake than Algonquin Highlands or Highlands East. And I might be in a better position to lead those discussions as a Deputy Mayor. I can honestly say that I have no preconceived bias or thoughts about the outcome of the Service Delivery Review other than having a willingness to work hard to see improvements made that will benefit each of our municipalities and all of our residents, most particularly. Again, I'd be proud to continue as your Warden. I believe that I have good community support and a good rapport with all of you. And I believe that I'm best suited to serve you at this particular time. I'd like to just take a brief moment to offer my thanks to our CAO, Mike, who's offered me solid advice and guidance and support as our CAO and to all of our staff. They've all worked hard and they've worked well with me. And I truly appreciate that, you know, that it's been difficult circumstances and I can't thank any of you enough. I'd like to thank you all and just add that if I'm not successful, I will be truly pleased to offer my full support to Counselor DeVaulon should he be our next Warden. Thank you.
Back to you, Warden.
With that, I think we would like a mover and a second or to move into closed, Counselor Roberts and oh, yep, go ahead, sorry.
Before we go into close, may I ask, and thank you both for your speeches. They were excellent and I congratulate both of you for putting your names forward, really. In terms of the time, I did check with Mike Rutter to see if we were able to move the time of not the date, but to possibly like three or four o'clock to give Counselor Kennedy and myself ample time. If that's not possible to do, like we have changed meetings at Dyserd before without changing our procedural bylaw, so I don't know if that's possible. And if it's not, Counselor Kennedy, we'll just have to, if we're not finished our Dyserd council meeting, we'll have to just go into a long recess and reconvene. So just is it possible to change the time? To say three or four o'clock?
Counsel? Counselor Moffett?
I certainly have no challenge with that. Just by way of history, the inaugural was moved to two PM to accommodate bad weather and long drives. And of course, we can't predict that, but I certainly have no problem changing the time to accommodate Dyserd.
It used to be seven PM, you're right. But that we meet the next day. So is it possible, Mike?
Well, again, the procedural bylaw says that it will take place at two o'clock. So it specifies the time. The way the procedural bylaw words is that an amendment, there would be a notice at the previous meeting that the procedural bylaw would be amended. And so I guess if there's an agreement, County Council can do what they wish, I would say. I will leave it at that.
So I didn't want to change the whole procedural bylaw. It's hopefully just for this year or maybe just put it at four o'clock. I don't know. It would suit us, but we will be two counselors and I will make the Dyserd council meeting work however. I thought it was just as simple as we could just change the time. But I don't know. What to others?
You muted, Warden Danielson.
Sorry. I got a bit of a mixed message from our CAO about you can't change the time, you can change the time. I don't have an issue with four o'clock and I'm not sure that anybody else would. Does anyone have an issue with four o'clock? I think for everyone's purposes, we'd like us all to be here. Okay, so we can agree on that? Show of hands? Four o'clock? Thank you. Is that sufficient for your purposes or do we need a resolution?
I was gonna say yes and no. It's fine.
So I think I was looking for a mover and a second or to go into closed and we'll have a fifteen-minute break. Counselor Moffett and Counselor Shell, thank you.
Moved by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Shell, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council enter into closed session as per section two thirty-nine, two of the Municipal Act two thousand one as amended for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. A trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization. And a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, so we will see everyone in fifteen minutes. Sorry, I can't see my clock, so I can't tell you exactly what time. We're live. Okay, welcome back to the open session. I have, could I have a mover and a second or for a resolution that comes out of closed? Counselor DeVaulon, Counselor Moffett?
So I have drafted the resolution. If the mover and second or would let me know if it is acceptable. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council directs staff to write a letter to Minister of Infrastructure Scott requesting the results of intake one. Requesting that the results of intake one be announced as soon as possible as they will inform the county's future efforts to expand broadband accessibility in the county. And further that we formally request an extension to the intake two deadline as it would allow us to make plans which knowing which areas will receive enhanced coverage as a result of intake one projects.
Do we need to add reference to the icon that is the icon program that we're?
I think I talked about intake. Yes, okay, yeah, yeah.
Question from Counselor Moffett?
It was exactly what you'd said is to make reference to the program name.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Is that fair for the mover and second or? Okay, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, we'll move into the approval of the tariffs of fees bylaw. Could I have a mover and a second or for that resolution, please? Counselor Roberts and Counselor Kennedy?
Moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Kennedy, be it resolved that bylaw four zero one nine, being a bylaw to establish a tariff of fees for the county of Halliburton be considered red a first, second, third time finally passed and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? Thank you. Is there any notice of motion? Hearing none? Could I have a mover and a second or for the confirmation bylaw, please? Counselor Shell, Counselor Moffett?
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Moffett, be it resolved that bylaw four zero two zero, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered red a first, second, third time finally passed and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? Carried, thank you. And a mover and a second or for an adjournment? Counselor Kennedy and Counselor Burton?
Moved by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Burton, be it resolved that the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor? Thanks, everyone. We'll see you all shortly.